All right. Good evening, everyone. We want to call the Caldwell County Board of Commissioners meeting for Monday, June 13th, 2022 to order. We'd like to welcome everyone who's in attendance in our audience here this evening, as well as those who are joining us by TV. At this time, we'll have our invocation. We have Pastor David Dean with us from the Covenant Baptist Church, and he'll lead us in our invocation, and that'll be followed with our pledge of allegiance, and Commissioner Donnie Potter will lead us in that this evening. So Pastor.
Our heavenly Father, we come before you today.
Dear Father, because we can. We thank you, Lord, for this day, because you tell us, Lord, this is a day that you've made, and we need to rejoice and be glad in it. Lord, I thank you for an opportunity to stand in your presence here today, dear Father, in this community meeting, dear Father, and I just thank you, little Lord, for what you're going to do. I pray for these commissioners, dear Fathers, they come together tonight to make decisions that affect this county, and I thank you, dear Lord, for their service to this county. I thank you for those who are sitting in the office, and those others, dear Father, who are here tonight to see that God's your will be done. I ask you now that you'll just put your spirit upon us and guide us and direct us, and let your will be done, for it's in Christ's name we ask it. We all say, amen.
Amen.
Please face the flag, salute. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Pastor.
Are there any amendments to our agenda this evening?
Not this time, sir, but it's a long one, so we may have breakfast before we get done.
All right. So hearing no amendments, do I hear a motion that we adopt this evening's agenda?
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept this evening's agenda, as the county manager has presented.
Any other discussion or comment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries. I will, I would like to mention Commissioner Wilkie is under the weather this evening, but he is joining us by telephone, so if you hear his voice come out, if he has a question or something, he, he may ask that, but he is attending by phone this evening due to sickness. He's at home not feeling well, so we appreciate him doing that as well. And so our first item on the agenda this evening is a public hearing for a jobs incentive for Fleet Genius. That sounds like something to be interesting, Deborah. Our EDC Director, Ms. Deborah Murray.
We need all the genius we can get, do we not?
Yes, we do.
Well, I'm excited to bring to you a new project of an existing company. Baker's Waste, back in 2012, came to Caldwell. They wanted to consolidate their three properties, and they did. Brick Rains brought them here. They grew. They've done well. They moved into the old Broy Hill Plant 55 on 321A and breathed new life into that, had been vacant for a very long time. And they brought 82 jobs originally to the, to the company and, or to the county. And more recently, the company was acquired by Andreas Grusen, and they are the company Fleet Genius, and they are an environmental solutions company. They're headquartered in Naples, Florida, and they produce, just like Baker's Waste did, industrial containers, but they also have an enormous compactor business. And they are requesting local jobs incentive to dramatically expand the company, adding 120 jobs. Company's jobs pay, on average, equal or more than what the county's average wage is, which is $43,905. And they are here asking for local jobs incentive consideration at $2,000 a job for those new jobs to be created in one year. They have other plans for expansion, not too distantly down the road, but the company's owner, Andreas, is here, and I'd like for you to meet him and hear about his plans for the company and what exactly they do. Andreas?
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for seeing me tonight. I'm excited to be here. As Deborah had mentioned, we had just acquired Baker's at the end of last year, and it's been a tremendous six months that we've owned it, and we've seen a lot of positivity and excitement. If you look at the history of Fleet Genius, and I've been in the waste business for about 30 years, we grew Fleet Genius from three years ago with about 100 employees to today. We've got 600 employees. So we're very much about growth, and I think the market has accepted that, and our intent is to do the same thing here in Lenore. We're really excited about the facility here, about the workforce. It's been a tremendous run. I always enjoy walking the floor at least once or twice a day, and we've got people smiling and waving, and we intend to increase that. The way I look at it is we've got a facility that, at 5 o'clock, the lights go out, and we need to double. We can double the capacity of the facility. It is our only production facility, and the mitigating factor has been getting more people in the door, and that is really our goal, is to increase the employment at the plant, increase the capacity of the plant, and to continue growing it. As we have talked earlier, I'm so excited, and I had this speech a month ago or so with the high school, with the high school students at the college, and we talked about some of the interesting things that we were doing, and I said, you know, it's so exciting for me to go up and down 321 and see the trucks with Baker's containers on them, and our only mitigating factor is historically Baker's is sold really within the 350-mile radius of the plant. Fleet Genius, we're already in 26 or 27 states across the United States. Our goal is to expand the coverage of products out of this plant, particularly on the waste compactor side, which are economically feasible to do so, and bring Lenore's finest to the rest of the country. And so that's why we're here, asking for some support here, as we kind of continue to grow our employment. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. So, did you have anything else, Deborah?
No, don't you love his enthusiasm?
Oh, I do.
Everything. I'm excited, because he's excited.
Yes, that's right. And so with that, I will open the public hearing, and we didn't have anyone signed up to speak in the public hearing portion, so I'll declare the public hearing closed, and ask what the pleasure of the board is in adopting this resolution this evening.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we accept the resolution and award the job incentives to Fleet Genius.
All right. In a matter of 120 new jobs.
In a matter of 120 new jobs.
Any other comment or discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries unanimously. So, thank you. Welcome. I've got to say this while I'm here, and we appreciate industry and appreciate new jobs, and so much so that sometimes I think our residents lose sight of how hard Deborah and her staff are working to bring that, that industry here and to bring folks in, specifically in an industry of welding and the fabrication. And we know our community colleges worked really hard about getting some programs together to meet the needs, and so, but oftentimes, our public, for some reason, wants to complain that the commissioners are not working hard enough. And so, we do a lot of work behind the scenes, and Deborah's taking care of a lot of things for us in that, and I just wanted to say this is just another win for Caldwell County, and we thank you for coming here, all the way from Florida. And as you said, I thought it was very eloquent, bringing Lenore's finest to the rest of the world. So, and we do have some fine folks, and we appreciate your willingness to come here and investment in our community.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And we, we're always reminded that these companies could expand and grow anywhere they wanted to. It's a very competitive environment, and they chose here. So, we are grateful. Thank you. Thank you.
So, thank you.
Thank you, Deborah.
Good luck. All right. Next is our public hearing for the proposed budget, and would you like to start that, Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir. You'll need a motion to open here, and I can make a quick presentation. We can take comments.
All right. So, we'll declare the public hearing open in reference to our 2022-23 fiscal year budget. So, our county manager, Mr. Donald Duncan.
Chairman and Commissioners, thank you all. The proposed budget for fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2022, is submitted for your consideration. The recommendations contained in this budget are the result of the Commissioners' planning workshop on April 7th and budget workshop on May 18th. The proposed budget represents many hours of analysis by the entire staff and presents a financially sound plan for the provision of county and state services at the present level. Many of our partnerships are reinstated or grown as a result of the decline in the global pandemic of note, but not limited to the Greater Hickory MPO, Western Piedmont Council Governments, Caldwell County EDC, as y'all just saw, Caldwell County Chamber of Commerce. These partnerships continue to benefit all involved by providing support and insight on complex issues facing our community and the region. Caldwell County has embraced the new role by participating in regional initiatives to protect our resources, limit liabilities, and leverage taxpayer dollars. Economic development activities during this pandemic increased substantially. As a result of the pandemic, the global supply chain became disrupted, and more companies looked to domestic sourcing. Manufacturing-based communities like those in Catawba Valley have flourished, as more people relocated to suburban and exurban areas. The need for home furnishings and materials grew exponentially. Business tourism floundered during the, during the pandemic, and domestic and global travel was suspended, but now has rebounded to greater than pre-pandemic levels. Occupancy taxes in Caldwell County have more than doubled since 2017. These funds are reinvested in the chamber and the EDC to assist in the growing economy. EDC has successfully repurposed many empty buildings for new businesses 2012, reclaiming over 6 million square feet of industrial space, leaving low or no inventory in these buildings. Recent years, economic development clients have begun to consider new construction as an option. The easiest sites are developed, and most have been taken. And new industrial sites require larger investment to partner in utilities, grading, and site acquisition. Caldwell must establish an inventory of new sites available for marketing to new and expanding businesses to guarantee the highest and best use of these properties. The county and/or a partner municipality should have ownership or contractual site control to implement its industrial development strategy. As part of a new initiative, county commissioners, along with the EDC, in partnership with the municipalities, have begun a pad-ready site spec program. There's critical need for inventory of industrial buildings for existing and new industry clients. Further diversification and continued growth are necessary for economic population and tax-based growth. This is an aggressive economic development strategy and leadership from our commissioners to recruit and negotiate with partners from the private sector, municipalities, and state agencies. This will reduce our liability in our, for us and our partners to construct pad-ready sites, buildings, and diversify our workforce in quality and quantity. Despite the pandemic, development in Caldwell County has continued at a robust pace. All sectors have experienced expansion. Industrial development has seen a banner year with investments from Carolina Leg, Exela, Graham Manor, Harmony Timberworks, Sattler Corporation, Wild Fort Foods, RPM, Serpro, McCray Modern, and now Fleet Genius. Purchase of the, purchase of the former Baker Waste Facility and its growth in Inheasian Biomedical as well. Current estimates are at $108 million in new investment just this year, with an estimated 485 new jobs. The first $120 million investment is underway at MDI as well, so you're looking at a significant year in tax-based growth and the potential of more expansions on that campus. Residential permits, both single and multifamily, have seen record growth. In 2018, residential permitting was 180 for the total year and 241 by 2021. For the first quarter of this year, they're a little bit above 20, 25% more. It's about 27% to date above last year's, which was a record year. Remodeling permits and additions are still strong. However, the possibility of increasing interest rates and the cost of materials is driving prices higher for all work related to home construction. Our commissioners have taken on the challenge to limit borrowing money and avoid paying high interest rates. Our debt ratio is 6.13%, well below the state rate, average, and below the 30% threshold established by the LGC. This year's additional debt service of $438,000 in principal and interest applies to the new animal care shelter. General Assembly has helped with that funding, and we anticipate retiring that debt with, in five years. The commissioners have created stable revenue to maintain long-term reserves, and most importantly, reduce the need for future commissioners to borrow money and pay interest. It's because of the commissioners' focus on basic human services, conservative physical nature, and sound long-range planning that we enter 2022 and 2023 fiscal year optimistically. In order to provide the same level of service expected by our citizens, I recommend commissioners maintain the current tax rate of 63 cents, and the fire and rescue tax remain as follows. The only requested increase was from Granite Falls, Kings Creek, and Patterson Fire and Rescue. All three are represented here by their chief officers tonight, so if there's any questions of them, they're here for that. And I appreciate you, gentlemen, coming. Thank you so much for that. And City Manager Jerry Church from Granite Falls as well. Sorry, Jerry. General fund revenues, this is by growth and by type. Confident Mr. Hilton has estimated our revenues conservatively. Our current avulorm estimated revenue is 46,321,000, assuming a 97% collection rate, for a total assessed levy of $7.5 billion, almost 7.6 billion. This is up with a levy of $7,510 million, so you had $70 million in growth in one year last year, which is pretty good. That's at a 95% collection rate. Caldwell County's traditional budget, general fund balance, and consistent returns that every year. For fiscal year 2020 and 2021, staff returned more than 1.8 million in fund balance after borrowing about six, so that was fantastic. This year, we estimate somewhere to, somewhere near in the neighborhood of a return of around $5 million. The proposed budget for 2022 and '23 as presented includes a $4.8 million unreserved general fund balance appropriation. New revenues this year include a conservative 5% increase in sales tax. The state average is going to be north of 7.5%. It could be as high as 11% in many counties. We're still seeing that continue to climb, and there'll be new revenue from the gasification system at the Foothills Regional Landfill. We're not 100% certain on what that revenue will be yet. We have an estimate, so we were very conservative and cut it basically in half to $125,000 a year. General fund expenses. The Caldwell County Commissioners ensure staff has the resources needed to fulfill our obligations to citizens. Of note, this budget continues the salary study implemented in January of 2022, and begins the merit pay system, where employees receive additional compensation based upon their annual review. The focus of merit pay is to continue, excuse me, is to continue to improve the lives of our frontline employees. Merit one of $1,000 added to base pay may be awarded to employees performing at an above-average level and routinely contribute to the betterment of the organization. Merit two of an additional $1,000 added to base pay may be awarded to employees who routinely go above and beyond their assigned work and represent the values of the county. In August of this year, or, excuse me, last year, the State Treasurer informed us that all state health plan participants would see an increase, or assume no increase in healthcare costs. And then in January, they reversed that and had a mid-year increase estimate of 16, 17%. The budget also accounts for planned increase for the retirement contribution. Budget provides for annual lease commitments to the sheriff's office of $345,000 for new body-worn cameras. We got to see a little bit of a presentation from the sheriff's office on that. These body-worn cameras will coordinate with their in-car cameras that have the license plate reader technology built in. These are invaluable to protecting officers' lives, fair and equitable treatment of our citizens, and the return of stolen property or helping find missing persons. These cameras essentially pay for themselves and reduce law enforcement liability in the use of force claims. County staff are always looking for ways to operate more efficiently and provide better level of services. Our registrar of deeds, Wayne Rash, has proposed adding a U.S. passport program to his office and charging a nominal fee to provide for this service. With the dynamic employment market, I recommend the county expand its internship roles to all departments, creating an immersive internship experience. This objective would be to create a better-trained civil servant, working with our local colleges and universities to shadow our leadership team. Interns will be given assignments as a regular employee and have a chance to learn our culture and be trained at low or no cost to the county. This budget includes county's participation in many regional organizations, such as the Western Piedmont Council Governments, the MPO Planning Organization, and the Western Piedmont Regional Transit Authority. New revenues generated by the gasification system will be used to contract for roadside litter pickup, ongoing maintenance of the former landfill site, and add a new position in the Waste Management Specialist. The position will work, work to educate the public and students about better recycling habits, coordinate with private sector partners on roadside litter and recycling, and household hazardous waste, as well as clean Caldwell. Want to back up just a second and talk about the merit pay versus a COLA. Very quickly, let's see if my mouse works here. Under a COLA system, if we did a 1% for a $15 an hour employee, that would be $300, and so on, up to $900 for a 3%. So, if we do the, do the merit one, that's equivalent to a 3% increase on their base pay. So, just a little bit better than a COLA. And then if they qualify for the second merit, that would be the equivalent to a 7% increase. So, I think this is a much better way to reward our folks. Those that are doing a great job will be recognized, and those that are contributing to the organization and not causing any issues will still get rewarded. So, I think if we're able to implement this over the years, and we slide our pay scale at the same time, we'll be able to keep up and not have to make these big jumps that are $2, $3, and $4 million at a time. The utility fund, real quick. Utility fund is in, is in excellent shape, but thanks to people like Granite Falls sitting there in the office, there's a rate increase from Lenore, increasing both the monthly minimum charge, about 39 cents per 1,000 gallons, for an average monthly bill of $34.71. It's in stable operating condition, and we can want to continue doing that. Ongoing maintenance and inspections keep our system from failing into, falling into a state of disrepair, keeping basic life-giving services such as clean water affordable. The utility fund needs additional contracted services and staff. In order to keep up with demand, staff is requesting two additional employees to implement a valve exercising program, hydrant testing, and backflow prevention. Additional services included contracting tank maintenance and a utility rate study to look at our long-term capital needs. I recommend improving operations and maintenance inside the utility fund. The system is well-managed, and now we must turn to an aye to the future. Water storage, pressure tank maintenance, and repair replacement of substantial lines should be our focus. The list of capital improvements is substantial and expensive, but much needed. Commissioners have already approved moving forward with a Coltsville Water Tank at $3.4 million. That project will go back out to, for a second bit, so we'll have new numbers on that. Skated system implementation of $750,000. Kincaid Hill, $100,000 water extension service, and a $160,000 extension to Draco RV Park. That includes a contribution of $130,000 from the developer, and a significant project of Lakeview Park estimated replacing the lines in that community is around $1 million. Those are the galvanized line systems that we talked about. Also includes $100,000 for engineering and surveying for future infrastructure and economic development projects, should they arise. This would help us create a shelf projects program to aid in water supply pressure, and ultimately provide better fire service insurance ratings for our citizens. Another thing that I recommend in this utility fund program is to have a comprehensive rate study done, so the county can plan for future growth of its system. Capital outlay. I'm going to step back to the general fund real quick. Network security has been a priority of this commissioner since I've been here, and I want to thank you all for that. Chris comes in every day and says, hey, I found another problem, and we'll talk about one tonight. He wishes to upgrade the switches throughout the county, and improving that security system is about $110,000. Also, in capital outlay, we have for animal control, two, two replacements of existing trucks. And in the sheriff's department, we have additional funding for communication and armor for the SWAT team and eight patrol units, and some of those are funded by the SCIF money, and some are coming out of general fund budget. The county received over $250,000 in SCIF money just for these basic needs, and so we'll use those well. In summary, oh, and QRV and ambulance chassis. In summary, your general fund is $93 million. Your education fund to the community college and the public school system is $18.8 million. Utility fund this year, $7.7 million, almost 7.8, for a total of $119 million budget. The components that I just covered, this year's program of work will continue. Some of these projects are multi-year projects, and you're just starting them now, including the animal care facility, the HVAC improvements to multiple properties, engineering construction of the new EOC, and potential repairs to the historic courthouse. Caldwell County has a long history of having very little fees, but with the current economic situation and the commissioners' desire to maintain low tax rate, I recommend adopting a new schedule of fees with the addition of hydrant meter charges, establishment of meter fees that recoup our costs, building and fire inspection fees in line with surrounding counties. It'll be a big change in how we do our budget. Currently, we have ordinances in place, and it says you will charge X dollars, and so if you wish to change that, you have to change the entire ordinance. Most communities have went away from that and say, see the latest updated schedule of fees, so that'll be in addition to your budget this year. That goes back and actually gets us on track to where we need to be. In conclusion, this year's budget is based upon your direction, the county's long-range plans, and input received from our citizens throughout the year. The budget features added attentions that will make us competitive in this economic environment, addresses regulatory changes, and will make us competitive throughout all of our levels of service. Caldwell's budget focuses on essential human services and is our best effort to predict future needs. It builds on past decisions and looks optimistically to the future. This plan of work is the culmination of many hours of thought and work by you and the staff and Mr. Hilton. Budget considers state and federal fiscal issues and their potential effects on the county. We also weigh the impact of dynamic revenues, a robust economy, increasing mandates, future partnerships, and debt necessary for infrastructure improvements. The budget as presented will maintain our current level of county services and allow us to live reasonably with our means. I'm proud of the professional manager, manner in which the county and staff assisted in the preparation of this budget, and I commend each of you. We stand ready to assist you in any way possible, and as you move to adopt the budget for fiscal year 2022 and 2023, and I'll try to answer any questions if you.
All right. Does anybody have any?
How much of our budget went up over the last four years? I mean, it seems like it's just growing like crazy. Tony, you probably answered that pretty quick. But just estimate. I mean, it was like, wasn't it like $78 million like four years ago or something? It just seems like we're getting higher. And what is it, over $100 million this year?
119, thereabouts. Part of that increase for you is utility fund, is you have a lot of capital projects in one year. So, normally you wouldn't have this many fall at one time, but you've been preparing for these for several years, and they're all coming to about the same time. So, four and a half million of that is just in utility fund capital alone. So, and you also have to compare the ARPA funding, CARES Act funding that's in the budget, that's also washing through. So, you have a lot of additional federal monies and state funds that you haven't had in the past, to the tune of, well, from the state, it's been $21 million. That, that has a big impact.
I mean, in total, I think our general fund's like 93 million.
Correct.
And that counts utilities in that, which is 15 million of that, 14, 15 million?
Utilities, 7.7 million this year, operating, and education is 18 million.
Okay, so the 18 million on the education side of it.
And that was an increase too, wasn't it?
It is. It's about, almost $900,000 over prior year, because your revenues that we give, the revenues generated that we give to the school system are also up, so we're increasing that as well. But your, you know, your occupancy tax has more than doubled in recent years. Your fire taxes come in higher. That's one of your budget amendments tonight, just to $380,000. So, your revenues are doing very well, so your, your budget doesn't go up with that. You've got about, from this year's budget to last year's budget, almost $3 million in increased salaries. I think that's right, Tony. So.
That's just this last one. That doesn't include the one, the first one?
Correct. Yes, sir.
So, you're talking about probably?
Probably five.
Five, yeah.
Yeah.
A lot of that was offset by revenue, though. If you look at our fund balance appropriation, it's almost the same numbers last year.
Good point.
Yeah, so we won't, we won't end up spending $119 million. Yeah, that's just a proposal.
Yeah, I mean, you never spend all of it.
Right. And you put $5 million, almost $5 million back in fund balance?
We estimate.
Yeah.
We'll know, we'll know about August, end of August, what those bills come in.
Correct. And a lot of, as you said, a lot of this money is flow-through money from the state, too, so.
Tremendous amount.
What, you said $21 million?
Yep, $21 million.
So, $21 million out of that $119 is not our money, our tax dollars.
Really, out of that 93?
Really, out of 93. That's correct.
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah, out of ninety-three.
So you're back, you're back to that seventy?
I know, it just looks bad. Yeah. Going from seventy million, seventy-eight million up to over a hundred and twenty million in a, in a year to it. I just look for stuff to start cutting on if we're gonna keep jumping like that instead of adding.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's kind of a little bit of a fuzzy math, I think, sometimes.
It's a different way that we normally look at it and that's because Donald is, is giving us a different way to look at it. Plus the windfall of that additional state, twenty-one million dollars. You won't see that next year.
Nope.
No, you got, yeah, I mean, uh, what is it? Yeah, almost all that's capital. So that's a, it's a big number.
Right.
But I just want the people out here to understand when we go from seventy-some to a hundred and twenty, you know, it's, it looks bad.
It looks that way, but it's because of windfalls of other, other funding streams. Cause we're still holding the tax rate at the same, same rate. Well, this is a public hearing. I know we had some sheets out to sign up on and nobody really signed up, but I know we got several of the fire departments here tonight and I didn't know if any of, of you folks wanted to speak. You don't have to, but you're here if you want to. It's your, your time to shine. Chief Ford, thank you for coming tonight, by the way.
Mr. Duncan.
Thank you, chief.
Mr. Lackey and commissioners, I'll take any opportunity I can to get to brag on the emergency services in Caldwell County. Our county don't really know what they have. They need to get out and visit, go other places and see what they've got here. The people that we have are second to none. And I'm talking about from volunteers all the way through. Give you a little history right quick because what we're here to talk about on my side is, is funding for personnel and that's the reason for our, our ask for our increase. When I wanted to begin my career in the fire service in nineteen eighty-five, I went to my local department where I lived in northern Caldwell County. Sixteen years old and they told me they had a fifty-member roster which was full and I could be put on their waiting list. I was number twelve on the waiting list. Eighteen months later, when my family moved from Blackberry Community to Patterson, I was still on that waiting list. That department now is entirely paid, no volunteers. Volunteerism is down nationwide, statewide. Go to any meeting of the Ruelton Club or the Optimus Club or your church and see how many volunteers you get. Even today, Patterson had two calls at the same time. Sent two guys to Richlands to a stroke call and we called for Valme to help us on a medical call. And as of just before the meeting, the guy that we went to a code blue and shocked him five times has been transported to Mission Memorial Hospital and hopefully will make it. But we depend on each other so much. In saying all that, the volunteerism has dropped, has dramatically affected us. And I was talking to Chief Burks before the meeting, you know, we're all dipping from the same pool trying to get help. And the reason being, and I was thinking, you can drive in over here to any of these restaurants. You can ride your bicycle in there and go in and wash dishes for fifteen dollars an hour, almost anywhere in Caldwell County. And I'm asking a person to come and risk their life every time the tones go off and we're able to pay them twelve dollars. And oh, by the way, you can't come work for us till you get, you know, five, six hundred hours of training and keep that up with about a hundred hours a year. And that's on the paid side. The volunteer side is the same. And that's what's happened to our volunteers, besides the fact of the new culture of people just not wanting to participate in their communities, is the volunteer side has dropped because if a young kid comes up and wants to join our department, yeah, we'd love to have you and we'll take you and we will train you and do everything you can, but you know, it's gonna be about two years before you can do anything. And by the way, you know, you'll be driving your vehicle at gas at five dollars a gallon and you'll be away from your kids' birthday parties and you won't get to go to these things to be a volunteer here. So in saying all that, that goes back to while I'm here is for our small tax increase is for personnel. And I would say, and I thank the commissioners and Mr. Duncan for sharing some ARPA fund money with us this year. And I did ask Jeff prior to the meeting, I'm happy to say that ninety-four percent of that money went to personnel. And I know that's what y'all wanted it to do and that's what it was earmarked for. And ninety-four percent of that money that was given to the fire departments went to personnel. And I would strongly encourage you, if that is available again this year, that was a big help. So thank you for the time. Just wanted to, first of all, opportunity to brag on our guys, brag on all the fire departments, EMS, emergency services. Our county don't know what they got.
No, sure.
And also, sound the alarm, no pun intended. There will be a need for county intervention in volunteer fire departments in the near future. Maybe not in my career, cause I'm trying to wind down a little bit, but maybe in, in some of you guys that are on the board and will be for a few more years and certainly some of these younger guys, there is a need, there will be a need and there will be a time in the near future that you and Mr. Duncan will have to figure out a way to intervene in some of the volunteer agencies in the county. So just, I try to say that every time I get someone's ear, but it's, it's coming. It's happening all around us.
Yes, sir.
It's happening in other counties around us. I don't have the answer. I would love to sit in on trying to figure out the answer. I don't have the answer. But it's something that, that we really need to consider and, and the people watching tonight, they really need to know what they have and, and they're getting it now for free. And it's, it's not gonna be that way forever, so.
That's right.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
Mr. Ford, this training that you're talking about, this ain't, this ain't local training, this is state required stuff.
Yes, and, and that was, that was some of my points.
It's not that you're making it hard on the people.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not the most eloquent speaker. When I get started talking, I forget things, but one of the points is, is part of our volunteerism or part of our problems with that is our volunteers are required of the same training as a Lenore firefighter or, or any firefighter that's full-time. And those guys can get it at work on their twenty-four hour shift when they're being paid. My guys have to get it on a Monday night, three hours at a time after working a ten-hour day at the farm supply store or at DOT or wherever their job is. So that's, that's what makes it so much harder and, and it takes forever to get that training as a volunteer. And by law, we have to, we have to rise to the same standards as the paid guys do.
And they're not different levels of standard.
It's not different levels of standards, no, sir. No, so.
Good point.
Thank you for your time.
Reggie, I wanna, I just want to thank you for all you do in your district. Cause I listen to the scanner, especially when my wife's working and I, I'm just amazed at how many calls you run. And from the chief's standpoint, you know, you're a business owner and being a fire chief, trying to be a husband, trying to be a father. I know it takes a lot of your time and it's truly appreciated. I don't know what we would do without you and your, your officer, your, your fireman and your people that just work with you up there, cause.
Enjoy it. You have to have a love.
You, you absolutely have to have.
You have to have a love for the community. If you don't have it, you, you won't, you won't make it, it won't last.
We're awfully blessed to have you up there. At some point in time, if that conversation starts taking place, we'd be honored to have you at the table.
Would love to. Thank you. Thank you for the cookies.
You're welcome.
Thank you, chief. Anybody else wanna speak?
You may want to recognize Commissioner Wilkie. Ask if he has any comments.
Yes, sir.
Robbie, do you have anything you'd like to say about the budget?
I'd just like to thank all of our fire agencies, our volunteers that do give their time unselfishly to our communities. Unfortunately, we've became accustomed to that through the years. And without people that are willing to serve their community in the future, we are gonna be faced with, with having to come up with a solution for that in the future.
All right.
I, I do want to thank Kings Creek Fire Department, Volunteer Fire Department for being here this evening and thank you for all you do. And Chief Bennett from Granite Falls. I can't forget Jerry Church. I mean, you gotta mention Jerry. Anytime we have a meeting, he has to be talked about, so we'll talk about Jerry a little bit. But I, again, I echo what I said to, to Chief Ford. We couldn't do it without you. I mean, our EMS folks and they depend on you to be there and we know that sometimes it's a difficult job. And I just want to tell you how much we truly do appreciate what you guys do. We're awfully blessed.
I think Chief Ford said it so well that our citizens don't realize well, all the time, effort, and everything goes in it. And I've been seeing a lot lately about real volunteerism being that firefighter that's gonna put four sixty-nine a gallon of gas in, in their vehicle and respond to your emergency and, and not get anything back for it. And so we certainly do appreciate the volunteer firefighters and paid folks and, and everybody that has a part of taking care of our community. And it's a big joint effort and we don't take it lightly. We know that it's a hard task. So anybody else, I don't wanna cheat you out of your time to shine, Chief Bennett.
Come on, come on, you wanna come, I know you do, sitting there bouncing in your chair.
I would basically just add though what he said. We're, we're dealing with the same thing. We've had to hire some firefighters in the last few months. We went from having thirty-eight on our roster about ten years ago to having twenty-one on our roster today.
Yeah.
So it's, it's a, unfortunately, that's the trend that's happening. And if you're out there listening or you wanna be a volunteer, please go to your neighboring fire department and sign up. We'd love to have anybody that's willing to come, any of the fire departments.
That's right.
But thank you for what you do.
Yes, sir.
I don't know if people realize that with the pennies on the dollar that the tax rate is for the fire departments. They, they have to buy all their equipment. Of course, they're, they're paying their volunteers a minimal fee, a minimal salary. They're buying all their equipment. That equipment has to be replaced from time to time. All the training, their buildings and everything. So really, it's, it's a tremendous value in every department, in every part of our county, and that is a part of your tax bill. But you pick up that phone call, you pick up that call and dial nine-one-one when you have an emergency, a fire or a wreck or some, some, you know, fire, fire department's gonna be out there, volunteer fire department's gonna be out there. So pennies on the dollar to take care of what, what needs to be taken care of our county. And so I'm appreciative also, as all my fellow commissioners have said, of, of everything that everyone does and we, we are blessed.
Yes, we are.
And I don't know if everyone realizes that when these chiefs come to us and they ask to raise the tax, we, we ultimately approve it, but every one of these have their own boards. So it's their community that decides that they need to do this. So it's, it's not just us over here looking and saying we need to do this or we need to do that. It's the, they have their own boards in each community and their boards decide what to do. And I, I think we, as long as I can remember, we've always approved everything that they've asked for cause they, every community knows it more, knows their community better than we do. So they, they have a, a board for each fire department. So it comes from that. There's where all this, so there's people out there probably need people, board members on these fire departments too, so.
Yep.
If you live in them communities, get in touch with them.
That's right. And I'll, I'll just add one thing to what Commissioner LaBrosse said about the cost, but I know in the Collesville community, we're getting ready to purchase a new truck, just one truck, five hundred sixty-five thousand dollars. One truck. So they're not getting any cheaper. And so we just appreciate everything. Been a bunch of barbecue chickens sold to try and pay for some of these trucks, right?
Y'all break tappets on the chickens, that's for sure. I would like to thank our county manager and our staff, our department heads and our leadership team. You know, I think this is my, I guess this'll be my eighth budget that I've passed. And I have to tell you that I think this process that we've used the last time was the most enjoyable. I think we, I think we got one of the best budgets we've ever had. We're making sure we're taking care of the things we need to take care of, the needs, not wants. And we actually putting money in the, in the five million, roughly five million dollars back in the fund balance. Don't know that that's ever occurred in the last eight years that I've been here. So I want to commend our county manager, Donald Duncan, and our staff for all your hard work and everything you did to make this budget what it is today. It's taking care of employees, which is a priority, but we have to continue to make sure that we're making, you know, paying them a, a good salary and making sure that we can retain and recruit employees. It's taking care of our infrastructure and those are important items. So thank you again for all you do.
All right. With all of that, I will declare the public hearing, a portion of our proposed budget closed and ask what the pleasure of the board is in adopting our budget for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three.
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion that we adopt the budget ordinance for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three as presented by the county manager.
All right. Any other comment or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, and that motion carries. And that moves us to item four, I think, for a decision of adoption of the resolution for fee schedule?
Yes, sir. This will be establishing scheduled fees for Caldwell County. And then what will come with this subsequently will be amendments to our ordinances throughout the year to get us all on the same page. So every time you'll see an ordinance that says fee of five dollars, that will say, see the latest schedule of fees and we'll start going through there and updating all those. So you'll see that come before you, it'll probably take, probably the better part of a year to get all those done, but that'll be okay. We'll knock them out a few at a time. This is the schedule of fees. Anything in this fee schedule can be changed at any meeting. If there's something changed, the economy changes, or there's a new service provider, or something happens in the general assembly, with the exception of the tax rates. That's the only thing you cannot change. You only get a chance to set that one time a year and you just did that. Other than that, if something happens, water prices continue to go up as far as brass and things like that. From our vendors, our meters double in price, we can adjust the fee to, to reflect that.
All right, so I guess we need to entertain a motion to adopt the resolution for the fee schedule for the upcoming year of twenty-two and twenty-three.
And we'll try to answer any questions you may have about any of that. There's a lot of stuff on there.
A lot of fees.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the resol, the, the resolution for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three fee schedule.
All right. Any other comment, discussion, or question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, and that motion carries unanimously. And then next is item five, presentation from Vaya Health Update, Community Relations Regional Director Dustin Burlison.
Mr. Chairman, just for a second while Dustin's approaching, I'd like to thank Abigail Rich. This is her first budget. And so she has, the clerk has a lot of responsibility in getting all these documents together. Tony's carrying the load, of course, and his staff and I just get to come in and do massive editing. But Abby took this schedule of fees in, in almost in just a few days and consolidated everybody's and got it in a form where we can understand it. They're all different formats and she got it all in at once. So did a wonderful job with it for, for the first time out, so.
We knew she was gonna do this.
Yeah. We're, we're, we're glad she's here.
Awfully proud of her.
Keeps, keeps us straight. And by the way, she provides excellent snacks before the meal for those of us that don't get dinner before we get here. So thank you, Abby. Yes, sir, welcome.
So good evening. Thank you for your time tonight. So like you guys said, Dustin Burlison with Vaya Health. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
And you know, since the last time we were here, you know, Vaya was covering twenty-two counties as far as managed care, Caldwell being one of those. And in January, we had a consolidation of the LME MCO Cardinal Innovations and now we're managing thirty-one counties. And so we've had a change in our board structure. Mr. Commissioner Bross, LaBrosse is now on our regional board and also the DSS Director, Mr. Wakefield. And so, you know, appreciate both of you guys kind of serving on that. Really, the biggest thing I want to talk about today is what's called the Child and Family Specialty Plan. And this is also, what you may have heard formerly is called the Foster Care Waiver. Medicaid in itself is kind of going through what's called a Medicaid transformation where, you know, July of last year, standard plan went into the mix. And December twenty twenty-two, what's called Taylor Plan will be effective across the state of North Carolina, which we will be managing in those thirty-one counties. However, the state is also looking at a separate waiver called the Child and Family Specialty Plan. And so, you know, it's a single statewide plan that would be available. And so, you know, it's a single statewide plan, uh, that would be available to really anybody under child welfare with the DSS, uh, Department, regardless of their location in the state. What's different in that today is it's more regionalized. So for example, all LME, LME MCOs are basically the ones working with DSSs directly, uh, you know, being in the rooms, being in the county versus what this proposed waiver would be more of a single, uh, statewide, one vendor across the state. The other, uh, kinda pieces of this is the only people that can apply for this through what's called an RFP or Request for Application is a standard plan, which would be a commercial plan like Blue Cross Blue Shield, uh, Mayor Health, things like that, or an LME MCO under Taylor Plan like Vaya, um, to be able to operate this statewide waiver. And so there's, there's a proposal, this, this kinda came about in February of last year or even this year where the policy papers came out. And, uh, long story short, uh, there's some eligibility that's different than what is today. So if you guys look at the screen, you can kinda see, you know, historically, the, the children and youth in foster care, uh, those receiving adopting, adoption assistance, and really majority of those under child welfare. What's also gonna be included in the new eligible population is also parents, guardians and custodians of the youth and children in foster care, uh, siblings and also family members receiving, uh, CPS in-home services. So a little difference there is what we have today. Um, however, uh, there are some statewide concerns about this waiver. And I think the biggest is it being a statewide plan, so one vendor across one hundred counties in the state is a concern because what we know is in our rural counties, um, you sometimes do get forgotten. And so I think Forsyth County is one of the ones that's really, been really vocal, uh, wanting to opt out of this waiver. But the other piece of that is there's been about, of our thirty-one counties, about two-thirds of the, the counties have voted on their boards of commissioners to basically write a letter of support to the state, um, asking for them to slow down this process because once they assign an RFP, they can't go back from it being a statewide vendor. So there's concern there. And then also the timing is really quick. Uh, you know, we've heard from the state, they'd like all LME MCOs to kinda come together to be that statewide vendor or statewide plan. But the timing of that really isn't even feasible because we're trying to roll out Taylor Plan in December twenty-twenty-two. And so, uh, Vaya's been collaborating with the other five LME MCOs. Uh, we've submitted several responses to this policy paper. There's been, uh, several letters across the state from the whole entire boards of commissioners, from DSS directors, um, asking for them to both, uh, like I say, slow down this process as well as consider a regional approach versus a statewide approach. Um, and so if we look at the Vaya specific concerns, uh, you know, we obviously oppose the statewide waiver. We like the fact, we talked to all of our DSSs, uh, in thirty-one counties. Every DSS tells us they want Vaya to continue to be that provider or that managed care organization. However, if this becomes a statewide vendor and foster care waiver does go through, then we would not be able to serve DSS kids. And so I think that is a concern. There are a lot of things that we are doing. We've creating a lot of initiatives because we recognize there are a lot of things that could be more fluid. For example, a kid going across counties, on these border counties that cross LME MCOs, that's tough. That can create a delay of two to three days. And I think all LME MCOs are, uh, in agreement, we're working together at a large, uh, high level way to really make sure that anything we can do to make this easier for our DSSs is we're gonna do with the state's approval. And so, you know, we've talked about there's an administrative burden to the state, uh, you know, not just the, the financial piece of that to create an entire new waiver, to have to fund a new CEO and infrastructure across the state, but also there's an administrative burden on providers who have to meet certain requirements to be able to provide services under this waiver. Everything right now that we've developed in Taylor Plan was designed to really meet this population of kids. And so, you know, like I say, taking this out of Taylor Plan into a separate waiver is a concern to us. And so really what we wanted to make sure is that you guys had the information. Uh, we've been going around talking to everyone. We talked to Mr. Wakefield, uh, often and just kinda talked to him about, you know, what the policy paper says. And I'll give you an example. Uh, one of the barriers that DSSs have is, you know, they get a kid that comes into care and they don't have a bed. And so they end up sleeping on a DSS couch for the night, uh, with the exception of we're trying to work with them under what's called a fast track to find them a bed for that night. And, uh, you know, we've, we've bought about seventy-five beds across the state that we pay a mo, uh, pay financially upfront to hold for one of our Vaya kids that come into, to custody. And in the state's policy papers under the statewide vendor, they're proposing thirty beds. And so we know thirty beds wouldn't meet the, the need of Wake County, for example. And so, you know, there's a lot of concerns. I think when we, we look at the foster care waiver, we don't see anything that's gonna fix, uh, the things that need fixed. And again, we're just committed to being there as we always have. We're, we're, we wanna be in their rooms to be held accountable and, you know, that's difficult to do as, as a state plan. So how you guys can help, uh, like I say, anything that you would be willing to do, whether you would be, uh, I know I'd sent a lot of information to, to you guys earlier with some data as well, but, you know, we have some templates of, uh, of letters of support that you guys could adopt and, and tailor to whatever it is that you would agree with to send to the thirty-one delegates. Um, we've also talked to Senator Haas, who sits on the, uh, Health and Human Services, uh, Committee at the state level. And, you know, I think there's a lot of momentum. However, the state is, it seems like they're continuing to move forward. So, you know, if you guys are willing to do, you know, consider supporting, uh, with a letter or calling, you know, your, your senators, your, uh, the delegates, then, you know, we would appreciate that. If you have any questions, feel free to reach out to me directly. And that's really all I got.
All right.
Dustin, has the, um, North Carolina County Commissioners Association happened? They spoke out to ask the state to slow down?
They have. So originally, uh, the North Carolina, uh, Association of County Commissioners was on board kind of with this waiver and, you know, recently there was a lot of momentum, maybe a month or so ago, and they had kinda changed their stance and they had asked the state to, uh, to slow down. However, we have noticed that, you know, I think the state is still moving forward in some ways. And so we're just continuing to ask the counties that we haven't been able to talk to yet, um, just to continue to have a voice because we know that, you know, the majority of the voices are happening down east, uh, as far as things aren't going well. But we also know in the western part of the state, things are going well. And so we wanna just make sure that everyone's heard, so. But good question. I appreciate that. Any more questions?
And Dustin, in the packet, he sent, there is a letter of endorsement, uh, I think we have for the chairman to sign, if y'all are okay with that. And then I'll reach out to Senator Haas personally. I grew up with him, so.
Awesome.
Try to reach out to him.
All right.
I'm okay with the letter.
Yeah, I'm okay with it, Steve.
Very well.
Will's good with it.
Well, it's, it's one of those situations where, you know, one size don't fit all necessarily.
Agree.
That's right.
If it ain't broke, don't try to fix it.
Right. Yep. All right. I appreciate y'all's time.
Thanks.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
All right. Our next item is a presentation of our county health report and our health director, Ms. Anna Martin is with us this evening. And you look like Christie Money.
Little change, little change. Sorry, sorry. So I'm Christie Money. I work in health education for the Health Department. This is Chau Vang. He also works in health education at the Health Department. We're just gonna talk a little bit about the State of the County Health Report, which we call the SACH. Um, the SACH, a little bit of background, we do the SACH every year that we don't do the CHA, which is the Community Health Assessment. So this year is, uh, the year for the SACH. So the last community health assessment was completed in twenty-seventeen, so it was due to be completed again in twenty-twenty, but due to COVID, we got an extension on that. So it will be completed next year. So we're actually working on that right now to be, uh, ready for twenty-twenty-three. So this year on the SACH, the, we have three priorities, um, that, these are also based on questions that were through the CHA, okay? So we've got preventative care. Hepatitis A in recent years, I believe we talked about this previously, has been on the rise in Caldwell County. So as the Health Department has part, partnershiped with Yokeville, Lenore Soup Kitchen and several local shelters, we've tried to go in and talk about hepatitis A just to educate, um, the people that are there in those shelters and to implement the hepatitis A vaccine. Um, so we're continuing to do that. We also offer hepatitis A and STDs testing at the Health Department. Another preventative care is youth mental health in Caldwell County. We're trying to focus on mental health and to comply various resources, including counseling, health services and services for children in foster care, in addition to other children throughout the county. Another focus is substance abuse. We have Drug Free Caldwell, which was previously known as Project Lazarus. It's a coalition whose mission is to create a more connected, healthy community for adults and youth, um, by reducing the substance abuse and education. Um, we're trying to educate and, you know, focus on getting out also to these other places to, you know, tell more about substance abuse and about the Drug Free Caldwell Coalition. So they meet monthly. Uh, we have, uh, many participating agencies, Jonas Hill, Caldwell County Schools, uh, Granite Falls Police Department, UNC Healthcare, of course, the Health Department, local pharmacies and primary care providers are on this board. We've also started the Restart Program. It was initiated in September twenty-twenty-one. The program is grant-funded and housed under our Caldwell County EMS. Our third, um, focus is gonna be mental health. The opening of Jonas Hill Hospital and Clinic has helped with a lot of resources in mental health in our county. Uh, we also continue to partner with RHA and Vaya Health. Despite the COVID-nineteenth influence on public health resources, we still try to implement many initiatives that targets our focus groups, uh, preventative care, substance abuse and mental health.
How are you guys today?
Good.
Doing great, bud. All right. So we're gonna move on to morbidity and mortality. So we're gonna talk about COVID-nineteen, of course. So from January two thousand twenty-one until December of two thousand twenty-one, Caldwell County had over fifteen thousand cases of COVID-nineteen. The Health Department overall collected over four thousand COVID-nineteen tests and there were about over a hundred deaths in Caldwell County. Um, as of right now, as of today, COVID cases have, are going up and we're trying to mitigate that by, you know, just keep on educating the public and hopefully. Um, all right, sorry. Uh, leading causes of death, back in two thousand twenty, uh, heart disease was still number one, cancer was number two, and chronic lower respiratory disease was number three. Move on to two thousand twenty-one, as we transitioned over, heart disease was still number one and cancer was coming in second. So when we did this assessment, we found some issues that were emerging in Caldwell County. Uh, infant mortality rate nationally, the rate is five point seven percent, but here in Caldwell is seven point two. So the Health Department recognized that. In order to overcome that deficit, we decided to partner with local pregnancy care centers to prevent infant mortality. Another one is syphilis. That is a sexually transmitted disease that can cause serious health problems. In order to mitigate that, we've collabora, uh, collaborated with agencies that will continue to refer patients to third-party institutes such as RHA or, sorry, no, not RHA, um, the Health Department, we do, uh, vaccinations and tests to help them out. And then, uh, in two thousand twenty-two, there were already twenty cases that were being monitored. We, see here, there was nineteen cases in two thousand twenty-one, sorry. And the last one was hepatitis A. That was another emerging issue that we found. Many people did not know they have hepatitis A, so, you know, they spread it without realizing it. And then in two thousand twenty-one, Caldwell County was identified as a hepatitis outbreak with forty positive cases. Twenty-three were male and seventeen were female. That's it. You guys have any questions, any concerns?
I don't have any questions. Anybody else have a question or comment? I do sit on the health board, I'll say this and, and the staff there, to Anna and her staff and certainly these, uh, folks here this evening, uh, work very diligently in identifying issues that are trending in our county and trying to get out in front of those. And I'm appreciative of that and, uh, the fact that we're trying to do something proactive instead of reactive. And, uh, so it's very, um, always a very good, uh, report to see this and see that we're identifying things that we're trying to mitigate and get out in front of. So I appreciate all of that effort. That infant mortality thing, though, we have fought that and fought that in Caldwell County. And I, I don't know what the answer is, uh, but we, we really try. And so, um, but keep up the, the good work and trying and we'll get there one day, hopefully.
I got one quick question. The, um, the mortality rate you showed twenty-twenty, twenty, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-one, um, I noticed that COVID didn't make the list of the top ten.
COVID-nineteen? Well, I mean, we wanted to really just separate that, cause if we did calculate that into the list, it would be up there as well.
Is that in here somewhere? Is that in the number, in the data?
No, it is not. But that is something that we will look forward to next year.
That's, that's excluding everything.
That's a really good question, yes.
Excluding COVID-nineteen.
Excluding COVID, yeah.
As our, as our leading mortality.
Well, and mainly-
Do we know where it fell?
I'm sorry?
Do we know where it fell in twenty and twenty-twenty-one?
It'd have to be number one. Yeah. Yes, sir.
This was taken, the source was the State Center for Health Statistics, North Carolina. So I just said that we were working on the CHA, which will be, you know, come out next year.
Right.
But in those questions and looking at these new numbers through the state, that of course is gonna show up.
Okay.
COVID will.
All right.
Yes.
Do we, are able to track opioid-related deaths?
Yep.
That'd be another one I'd-
Is that in there? So that'll be in next year's report? Okay?
Yep.
That'll be a huge part of it, sir.
Yeah, another part, big part.
Yeah. Yeah.
Do you wanna recognize, Robbie? Uh, Commissioner Wilk, do you have any comments or questions?
I'd say that mine. No, sir, I'm good, thank you.
Thank you, Robbie.
But yes, COVID, I mean, you know, of course, COVID is still number one with everything, but we have all these other issues that are out there also we're trying to focus on too.
Right.
You know, to help with those.
I just know the people at home are listening and thinking, well, they didn't say anything about COVID, so that's the reason I said that.
No, yeah, that was a really good question.
Yeah, it definitely happened in a way.
Hey Robbie, just so you know, you're actually sitting in your chair, so just, that's true. We'll, we'll make sure you know that.
He's probably watching us.
Thank you.
He probably is.
Thank you for your report. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you guys. Great job.
Thank you.
Um, next is our appointment this evening of Josh Engel is our Caldwell County Tax Administrator. And, uh, Josh is here somewhere. Where, oh, there he is. Uh, come on up here to the podium, uh, because he got very dressed up for this.
Well, he did, didn't he?
And he looking sharp and, uh, and I just wanna brag on him a minute and I'm excited about, uh, his appointment and appreciate him willing to, uh, take this task on. Hopefully by the time you get through, you'll have his me gray hairs as I have, which means it's a long time from now, Josh.
Thanks, sir.
So what do we need to do there, sir?
You have an approval of a contract and, uh, initiate the appointment.
All right.
So. Uh, I'm gonna go ahead and take the consent item with this, uh, if you don't mind, before you do that, because Josh was instrumental in that. And also Ms. Murray, who's sitting there on the second row, we were able to meet with MDI and had a wonderful tour of the facility, got to know those folks very well. Josh was critical and asking key questions and they had hired, for lack of a better term, and a hired gun to come in and contest their values. And Josh was able to successfully negotiate with them and get us to the right scheduled values where the county lost the least amount of money and MDI is paying a fair tax bill. And in, in return, they don't get to come back and challenge us again, so. That was a pretty good win for us. They did really well.
Yeah. Very well. Yeah. Very well. So do I hear a motion that we approve Josh Engel's contract and to appoint him as our tax administrator, I assume July 1, that appointment would affect?
July 1, yes, sir.
And all those burdens, I mean, payments come with that.
And there'll be a swearing-in ceremony on the 28th at 5:30 PM to celebrate with his family and y'all.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we appoint Josh Engel as the new Caldwell County Tax Administrator on July 1.
All right. Any other comment or discussion?
I just want to congratulate you, Josh. You've worked hard, my friend, and well deserved. And I echo the chairman's comment. It's always good when we see people that we can grow from inside and put them in such an important position. I don't think anybody realizes the magnitude of responsibility that a tax administrator carries with them every day. It's huge. You're the one who pays the bills to make sure that we can pay the bills, and you're the one who makes sure that our employees get paid and make sure that they can feed their families. And so we're super excited about having you, my friend. It's, I know you waited for a while on this thing, and we're blessed and honored to have you onboard and look forward to seeing you, what you can do with us. We're just super excited about having you there, bud.
No pressure.
And we expect you to stay longer than Mike and...
That's right.
Money, so you'll outlive me.
How many years you been here?
10 years. July 1 will be 10 years.
All right, so we've got 20 more with you then.
That's right.
30 at least.
I'm glad to say I've known him since before he was 16 years old. I took care of his insurance and his parents' insurance for a long time, and a fine, fine young man. And so you've grown into a man now that has a wonderful family, and you've worked hard. And I'm just looking forward, we all are looking forward to great things as you serve with us, all of our citizens in this county. So may God bless you and job well done, my friend.
Thank you.
Very well. All right. So Commissioner Branch made the motion that we approve the contract. Any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries. Commissioner Wilkie, would you like to say anything from your position there, sir?
I'd just like to congratulate Josh and thank him for all his hard work that he has done in the past.
All right. He'll say more when he feels better. Thank you, Josh. All right. So that takes us into our consent agenda. Mr. Donald Duncan.
Okay. So we've handled item A already. That is a budget amendment to reimburse MDI for their overpayment of taxes, and that was a negotiated settlement. Item B is the purchase of undercover cars. The Sheriff's Department periodically does this, and they change up their cars so they don't get identified routinely, and then they sell the old cars and buy new ones. Item C is a budget amendment for animal care enforcement supplies to purchase. This will go toward supplies and equipment that will go into the new buildings. They'll go ahead and purchase all supplies, cabinets, equipments, filing equipment. Our new animal care director is upgrading the filing system and doing better record keeping. Budget amendment for the ARPA funds transfer. This is permitted by the federal legislation in the U.S. Treasury's office to allow us to take up to $10 million of our ARPA funds and transfer that into the general fund, and it is a legal washing of funds. We hate to say that, but that's what it's called. And so you're able to put that money into your budget and then spend it in your general fund how you see fit. And then we track the remaining amounts under those specific terms of broadband utilities and COVID-related issues. Budget amendment for fire taxes. The county collected an additional $308,000 in fire taxes, and we need to forward that on to our departments. Budget amendment for environmental health and lodging funds, an additional $5,500 was collected this year. Transfer funds in the water fund, this is for Gamble Sewer, where we do, we provide the water and do the billing, and then we turn around and pay them their share of the sewer. Budget amendment for the purchase of a vehicle for our medical director. Our medical director is very aggressive.
Can we, can we take a break right there and talk about that?
You're welcome to.
I know we talked about it a little bit, but Commissioner Branch mentioned it over here as well.
Yeah, that's fine.
I'd like to get some explanation from Dino exactly what this is going to be, this vehicle is going to be utilized for. Not that I'm against it, I just, I'd like to know. We've never done this before and...
That's just adding more to the fleet, more people, more cars, more taxes on the taxpayer. I mean, why are we going to buy every director a car in the county? You know, I mean, where do we stop this buying, buying, buying? That's what I want.
So there is no additional positions. This would be funded through the American Rescue Plan Act funds, not a general budget. The intent here during COVID was for COVID mitigation. We do system-initiated refusals, so with COVID patients specifically, and then we can expand out from there. With COVID patients, when we do a system-initiated refusal, many times patients with COVID respiratory distress, symptoms of that sort, were inundated in your local EDs. When you inundate your local emergency department, that delays transfer of patients from EMS. It bogs down the hospitals. So we were able to do system-initiated refusals. The intent here, as a partial component of this, was taking the ED from the ED to the patient. So you're literally doing house calls again with a physician. We were expanding that to also include follow-up on cardiac arrest, respiratory arrests, overdoses, as well as the community paramedic component. Benefits also increase, or benefits also include the decrease of door-to-CT times on stroke patients, door-to-balloon times on STEMI patients, active cardio, patients having a myocardial infarction, a heart attack. Increasing cardiac arrest and traumatic arrest, we want them to be able to go out into the underserved communities where people are not very likely to go into a hospital setting or very likely to go into a doctor's office setting. Our medical director is very approachable. Dr. McClintock has been phenomenal. She was able to learn the clinical setting and then teach herself the prehospital setting. Dr. Snyder is, started as prehospital. He actually started as a paramedic. He was an EMS director in Maryland and then has transitioned into the medical direction. So he learned the prehospital first and then trained himself in the clinical. So our hope is, you know, part of my job is to make sure we're on the cutting edge of prehospital medicine. You know, when we talk about prospective residents and businesses, quality of care is a component that businesses and the public try to find when they come into the county. They just don't want a house, you know, they need somewhere to eat. They need some great educational components, good county government, and healthcare is a component of that. So we are trying to improve that component. This vehicle is a prior federal vehicle. It has less than 12,000 miles on it, already completely outfitted. It's not going to cost any more money from a personnel standpoint or equipment standpoint. That amount actually includes the vehicle, getting it here and striping it, and then everything else comes from existing budget. We have all the supplies for it. The medical director's position is an already approved position within the budget.
So when you say it's a federal vehicle, what do you mean there?
It's a, so it's a used vehicle through a vendor that we have. We're not able to find a lot of new vehicles, so we did try to research. Already completely outfitted with lights and things of that sort. It was a federal vehicle from out west, has 12,400 miles. There's actually three of them. We looked at it as an opportunity to, yes, it does expand the fleet. You are correct.
Some will be paying taxes. I mean, we want to pay taxes, but having to keep up and...
It would. So maintenance would be, maintenance and fuel. We did, you know, we had to increase fuel budget this year, obvious, for obvious reasons. My budget on fuel, we actually have increased it through transferring funds, about 65,000 with existing budget. But yes, that would be your cost associated with it, was maintenance and fuel. That's correct.
And I'm looking for ways to cut stuff, and there we are, wanting to add more, so.
I agree. It is...
So Dino, I think...
All right. I just...
Go ahead, Jim.
I just, you know, what we're going to say when another director comes, say, well, you bought this director a car, we're going to buy another director a car. You know, I don't know where it's going to end at when you start doing that stuff. I'm totally against it myself. I'm just, but everybody else can do what they want.
And, you know, I've got some little reservations about it. You know me, I'm pretty supportive of VMS, but I know an ER doctor ain't got a lot of time historically. You know, when he's off, he's going to be doing his thing, and, you know, when's he going to have time to do all this other stuff besides being an ER doctor? And there's nothing against him. I'm just questioning whether it'll actually be utilized. What I'd like to do is, if he wants to, if he wants to do that, then let's maybe set up something where we pay him his mileage or something, and if he's going to participate, then let's get it off the ground and let him prove to us that he's going to do all these things. And then if it looks like, you know, he needs a car down the road, then we can talk about it. But I'm a little, I'm not 100% against it, but I'm a little hesitant just to pull the trigger on the, you know, right out of the gate, buying a medical director a car. And I'd rather just see it transition into something.
Yes, sir.
To that. I'd rather see it transition into a need versus a won't. And right now, I think it's a won't. It's not necessarily a need.
And that's, I mean, you say we buy it with this money, but that's money we could use other ways too. I mean, just because we got the money, don't mean we need to piss it away on something. You know, and I ain't saying that's really bad, but I'm just saying that, you know, it's just like free money that we're trying to throw away, trying to find something to spend it on or something. To me, that's just the way I feel about it, so.
And I'm, I'm super excited to have it about, have Dr. Snyder here and having him more involved. I just, I've never met the guy. I don't think any of us have met him. So just to jump out there and buy him a car is a little, in my mind, is just a little bit of a stretch, so.
But we can pay him mileage, correct?
Yes, we have travel training and travel mileage line items.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. I mean, let him, let him, let's work his way into that, that role. Because I'm just fearful we're going to buy a car that's going to sit over there and the wheels are going to rot on it.
When the time comes, make sure the motion includes to remove item H, and it won't go from there.
Well, that's fair.
I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
Well, we didn't hear from Mike and Randy, so...
Oh, I'm good with that.
No, I said we can pay him mileage.
Oh, okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dino. Item for decision, fireworks approval for the Village of Cedar Rock. It's required they have to submit a fireworks permit to the county. I believe we lost Mr. Wilkie there. And item for discussion, the Tri-County Speedway would like to change their times for practice so they don't violate the noise ordinance that we have under. They have to get permission from the county to do that. It's for those dates that are listed. The voluntary ag ordinance, there's actually a voluntary ag district ordinance amendment that has items changed from the General Assembly that's been passed to you. It's mostly definition changes, nothing serious. Approval minutes from May 19th, May 18th, and April 7th. And then appointments to the Granite Falls Planning Board, ETJ member, Mr. Patrick Barker. Sir, question?
Well, going back to the Tri-County Speedway request for practice times, it's just the one day, Thursday, June 23rd, 12 to 6.
Yes.
Okay. Because you were talking about practice times.
I may have said dates, yes.
Or dates. Yeah, okay.
Appointments to the EDC Board, Janet Aiken, Jonathan Blair, Richard Boyd, Anne Everhart Smith, and Mark Transu. Did I get his name right?
Transu, yeah.
I haven't met him, so. Deborah's here if there's any questions about that. And then the Industrial Revenue Board as well, Mark Transu, Larry Kayler, Dick Keyes, Jonathan Blair, Katie Woodall, and new appointment is Dr. Mark Portugal. And then we have appointments to the Planning Board, the reappointment of Chris Barlow, Jerry Branum, and John Moore. Appointment to the DSS Board, Ms. Diane Dunn. Appointment to the Board of Trustees, Allison Butler, Lauren Greer, and Kristy Money. Appointment to the Granite Falls Board of Adjustments, ETJ, reappointment of Wiley Moore. And in a budget amendment for registered deeds, we received an additional $2,000 in gift grants. This continues the process of going back and getting the older documents in the county, some of the oldest documents we have, and getting them treated with very tender hands to get them scanned in so we have digital copies. Many of these documents are fragile, and it has a process, and they have to be shipped out and made sure that they don't fall apart. And if they do, they're pieced back together to get a good electronic scan on them. This is our first opioid settlement disbursement. We expect to have three in about a calendar year's time of $315,000 each. We plan on the next meeting of bringing you to a spending plan and ordinance to set that up. We anticipate after this getting two more allotments in the fiscal year, and then it'll be a $315,000, thereabout allotment, we think, for every year for 17 years.
Let me ask you a question on this opioid settlement. Have we set up any kind of committee or organization on how we're going to spend this and talk about where the needs are, or we're just going to hand it off to one of these local 501-3Cs and let them spend it?
It's a great question. So we've been meeting routinely as staff, trying to figure out what the needs are. And then we've been slowly bringing in other groups, working through the Restart Program. And so that'll continue till we have a good plan in place. It'll be involved our Health Department, DSS, the Sheriff's Office, and then we'll expand. Right now, the partner we've of choice right now is RHA because of the mental health services and counseling they can provide. But it would give you an opportunity, basically, it'll be large categories is what we set out. And then as partners evolve or develop and provide services, then we can select those as we go. But yes, we'll have more and more and more meetings about it.
Well, and I'm, you know, I'm very thankful for these organizations, but I just, I just know that there's times when maybe sometimes their focus ain't really where it should, it needs to be. I just don't want to hand over, you know, almost a million dollars to them and say, here, go figure it out, you know? I'd like for us to have, I mean, we're the ones who fought and won the, well, our attorney did, helped fight and win the settlement. I don't want to just go hand it over. And we just keep doing what we're doing, is my point.
No, I don't think that's the case.
I expect something drastic and major changes, not just typical stuff we're doing right now.
In discussions with the sheriff or DSS director or health director and the rest of the team that's involved, which is about 20 people right now, our Restart Program is our primary focus because it's already established and is making headway. That grant runs out at the end of next year, so you could take these funds and continue that great work that you've already started, number one. Number two is, a lot of our deaths occur within 10 days of leaving incarceration. So we would start a program where we enter in treatment in the jail. The problem is, is that they're with us for a small time, maybe six weeks, maybe significantly less. It could be maybe up to six months. So who has that long-term health treatment partner? And that's the piece of the puzzle I don't have yet. It's, I think for our internal uses with our community paramedics program and being able to train them to administer Suboxone and other forms of treatment, and then that interim mental health partner that we're going to need in the jail, we kind of have that formulated. That picture's getting pretty clear. It's that, once they leave our care...
That long-term, and that's where I'm concerned about.
That's where we've got to fill in the blanks. We don't know yet.
Because that's something we ain't doing today.
Correct. And I'm not sure that's something that we should get in the business of doing if there's somebody already out there that's qualified and we can contract with them and say, can, here's a referral from Restart. Will you take them? Do you have the capacity and contribute some funding toward that? I think that's the way it's going to look. The truth be told, you're further ahead than most of the other counties with the Restart Program. So you're already out there. And then the Sheriff's Office has been a good-willing partner to figure out a way that we can get those mental health services, because it's not just an addiction you're treating. There's a reason they're addicted. There's a reason they turn to drugs. So you have to try to have that, that long-term counseling, that long-term medically assisted treatment. And so we'll be entering in that. Our goal would be is, if you have, I know Ms. Director Martin's issue has been that mothers that come in that are addicted with no prenatal care, what do we do there? You know, that's, and we were talking about, you know, our infant mortality rate. It begins in the womb. So that's something that we would also focus on, those kinds of programs. My goal is, is by the July meeting, to have a better map of how we're going to spend these funds. But we're in no hurry with it. But you do have to adopt an ordinance that says, here's how in general we'll spend these funds, and then we pull from there. And you'll modify it periodically as things change.
I just, to me, it's a serious issue in our county and not just our state. I just want to make sure that we put every inch, every ounce of energy we have into trying to make it better.
Great, yep. Let's see. Budget amendments for ARPA funds for the jail, Wi-Fi. During COVID, at the peak of COVID, the courts were essentially doing electronic arraignment. And then the counselors could meet with their clients, and the district attorneys could meet as well, and it was remote. And so that has continued, and now it is used on a daily basis, many times a day. And so the bandwidth that we have in the building is very small. The buildings that we have at the courthouse and the jail were not designed for electronic communication. So we have to up the bandwidth in there. We have to have larger switches, better connections now that it has become an established form of communication from the jail to the courthouse. And what I don't want to get into is a situation where we have a judge that has to stop... And what I don't want to get into is a situation where we have a judge that has to stop a court proceeding because they can't hear testimony or hear statements from a client. So that's our goal, is to up that and make that a stronger, more robust system. Uh, it is sporadic. Most days it works well, some days it doesn't work at all. So, uh, Chris has identified that as a problem and is working on it. So these funds would go to that, and those are ARPA funds. Uh, and I think it was CareZak funds that did the original system. And it was basically designed to be with just a couple iPads, and now we're using significantly more bandwidth. Appointment of the L E P C Board, Jacob Boggs, and approval of the attached board member changes, fireworks display for Tri-County Speedway, and a budget amendment for the county portion of the communications and data contract with the Norcon Department of Information Technology. A lot of our bandwidth that we get from data comes through a state purchasing contract, so we get it at about two-thirds less than what the market would pay for it. This is eighteen months worth of bills. They were not budgeted in your prior budget, so we've got to pay our, our old bills back. And then Town and Gamble Stream Bank Restoration Agreement. Uh, this is a grant that was given to us, to the state, to administer for the Town and Gamble. Uh, it's a pass-through agreement, and we'll just have to monitor it. It's with us, uh, the Resource Institute, and the Western Piedmont Council governments, and of course, the Town and Gamble. And that's a long list.
Very long consent list. So what's a pleasure of the board in adopting our consent agenda minus item H?
I need to provide clarification on item Q. That would also include Margaret Borheal to be appointed to the IRB Board. Her application's in the packet, her name is just not on the item.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right.
Did I correct Deborah's or anything else?
Oh.
Sorry.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve this evening's consent agenda with the exception of item H.
And the addition of this additional nomination.
Of item Q in the additional nomination.
All right. Hearing that, any other comment or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. And I think that brings us, uh, to the end of our meeting this evening, unless anybody else has anything you would like to say. Hearing none, do I hear a motion that we adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, we are adjourned. Thank you again for being here, and I thank you for those who are watching by TV, and hope you have a good evening.